Okay. I'd like to open the meeting of the Committee to Review Town Council Rules and Town Code. This is October 29, 2024, 5:30. This meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the Town of Barnesville's Government Access Channel. In accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 20, the Chair must inquire whether anyone else is recording this meeting, and if so, please make their presence known. None, this meeting will be replayed via Xfinity Channel 8, or High Definition Channel 1072. It may be, it may also be accessed via the Government Access Channel Live Video On-Demand Archives on the Town of Barnesville's website, as is listed on the agenda. So first, roll call. Thank you, Cindy.
Counselors, Burdick.
Present.
Clark.
Here.
Lovekey.
Here.
Tamish.
Here.
Turkleson.
Here.
You have court.
Thank you very much. KB, any public comment? Public comment, please, or utilize the Zoom link. Anything for us, Larry?
I can now or later. How do you want me to do it? I want to go over this counselor code of conduct. I want to do it now or later.
Now's the time for public comment.
Okay. Should I sit up at the table?
Just so that people can hear you on our corner.
Let me sit over here. That's okay to sit there?
Yeah. Yeah, Larry, how about it? Three minutes? Do you do it in three minutes?
I can. I've got a handout for you after I've covered it.
Okay. Thank you.
Trying to hit the highlights. At the September 24 meeting, which was the last one, and the only one that wasn't here was that the counselor code of conduct is the first thing at the top of the page. And so I listened to the tape again. I looked at my notes. This is, this is what I observed and took notes at the time. The town attorney admitted that she had written or composed this as a rule. There's no evidence, no advance notice had ever been given to any of the committee members. And it was to be included as a code comes across as if the town attorney is trying to dictate or instruct the committee, the council as to how they're to behave. That's the way it reads, to my point of view. But does that leave the counselor, the town council, positioned to instruct the town attorney how she's supposed to behave? So this is a draft that I've gone through line by line, and I was given copies of this, which is more detailed. I read it out loud. It would probably take me eight or nine minutes. So each, each sentence is delineated. I point out the words in it that I consider to be significant. I think it's something that the committee itself, you're, you're positioned, you're the ones that make the decisions.
Make a recommendation.
Thank you, thank you. But you make the decisions as to what the recommendation's going to be. And then from there, it goes before the town council. I presume it will be an open, an open discussion at some point among 13 of you. And there'll probably be public comment on that. I could go into this in detail, but you all can read. And.
Well, thank you for making copies, and that way we'll have a chance to.
Well, I made copies in advance today, and. So I thought it would be better for you to have it, then you can select the words you want to, to deal with and go from there. I, I was very, I'm very concerned about this. I don't, I, I distinguish in here how the certain provisions are already covered elsewhere in, in the town code and/or in other provisions under the town council. Things have been inserted in here. This is, this treating you like you're in kindergarten, and you're not. You're all very intelligent, and I consider this to be something that my recommendation is the best thing is to kill it. But that's up to you. So I think you may want to do that at a later time after you've had a chance to review it. If I went through it now, you'd have a chance to discuss it, but if you don't, it would take one to three minutes. That's all I can say.
I appreciate that, Larry. Yeah, and if you don't have your copies, I'm sure Cindy.
I have copies right now.
Okay.
I'll hand them out.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, anyone else for public comment? Okay, thank you for taking the time, Larry. Now we'll move to item C. So public comment is now closed. And we'll go through the recommendations with Attorney Smoover and.
And Chair, Chairman. So I just want to note that the code of conduct was something that you all requested that I draft and prepare. And so I did that at your direction. And to the extent that there's anything in here about the town attorney, these are the town council rules of procedure, so that's the subject matter. So at the last meeting, there were a few things that I was asked to address in the latest draft. I'm going to go through that quickly, and then you can see where we left off, I guess. I was asked to codify the remote participation policy that the council has voted, and.
So five. Five, not sure. Page three.
Oh, yes. It's the last paragraph at the end of Rule 5. So that just references the policy that was voted in February 24. Subject to any amendments or revocation of that policy as may occur. I added the next sentence that was in, I'm thinking Amherst. I have to check my notes. So I can leave that in and take that out as you all see fit, if that's a new sentence. If technical problems interrupt remote participation.
That's a good, that was a good question.
My, my question, my, my question would be, okay, so I, I zoom in. I get disconnected. We wait five minutes, we resume the meeting. Half hour later, I can get back in. In that period, we have to define what happens there, because, I mean, how, how are we going to deal with it? Are we going to go back and redo that 20 minutes if we had three votes?
No, I think what this is intended to say is the meeting goes on.
Well, it should be, we'd be more specific with that.
I can be more explicit.
Because I, I just, I had that concern a couple, well, two times. I mean, I've had this happen with, with one counselor. And we go back and redo the vote and everything, and I just.
Well, we did, we did a vote there. It wasn't that he was having technical difficulties. It was that staff had shut down access to the meeting. So that's different.
Yeah, I guess that would be a little bit different. But anyway, I, I would just like that to be clear that if there are technical difficulties, not the fault of the town perhaps, or staff, but it's just clear what we do with that.
Well, the problem, I mean, I agree with what you're saying. I just think it gets so hard to define, like, technical difficulties as a result of the council, or is it the town's end? I mean, it really, it really gets kind of like, we're never going to be able to predict every problem that happens. What if the person is in an area where they have, like, a power outage?
And that's, I, I think technical difficulties. Excuse me, I'm having trouble reading this one. I think technical difficulties, it shouldn't matter whose fault it is. If you, if you, if you can't connect, the meeting can't stop and wait for you beyond the five minutes. The example you just gave, though, was not a technical difficulty. It was literally, we just shut off access. So I, I don't think that's this. But I think even if it was something that the town, like, that was at the town's end, first of all, I'm not even sure how you would know. But even if you did know, I think if, if the remote participation isn't working, this is kind of a way of saying, we're not going to wait forever, you know? This is an accommodation to let you participate remotely, but if for some reason it's not working and we wait a few minutes and it doesn't get resolved, we're going to continue the meeting. And then if the person can get back on, great, but.
And if there's an instance where the town is in an error like that.
With what?
If the town is in error, as it was that time with Council Mendez when he, when the link.
But again, that wasn't a technical difficulty.
No, no, I know that. What I'm saying is, is let's just say for some reason the town had an issue with the link again, or they shut it off by accident, or whatever. I guess we would just take it up as we did the last time and make a motion to reconsider those votes and go. Like, we would definitely do what we did the last time, knowing the circumstances wasn't a technical error. It was a human error at the end of the problem.
Right, to me, yeah, there's a difference. Still, like, the technology's not working, and we literally shut it off.
Yeah, yeah. But what I'm saying is, is if for some reason the town screws up again, because, like, we're all human and things happen, we would still have that process that a counselor could go back to and say, I was trying to get on and I couldn't, and, and then it came to light that the town shut the link up. I'm not saying we even need to state that in here. I'm more asking as.
Yeah, I, I think we would look at what happened, like we did last time, and say, what's the right thing to happen here? Because in that case, that counselor had complied with the policy, gotten permission to participate remotely, and was trying to get on.
Yeah.
And so, you know, the town had literally shut that off. And that's what the problem was. It wasn't that anything wasn't working.
I'm just more stating that out loud. It's, like, we're reasonable, and things happen, and human error happens, and it doesn't mean that.
Yeah, I mean, I could try to grow it in seconds.
I know that needs that. I'm just more asking.
Yeah, I do, I do think that's different, and we're in charge to figure out what's fair and correct, and that's what it stands for.
Yeah, I wanted to ask, because you mentioned the policy from February 15th. I don't even know where to find that. I'm just wondering, you know, what it is. I just, again, looking at Amherst. And they said you could do remotely, only if physical attendance would be unreasonably difficult. And I really like that. I don't like this discussion we've been having. Well, it was just done for favoritism. I mean, I've heard some snarky remarks.
I think we actually had something in our policy along those lines. I did look it up. I didn't print it out.
Five reasons. Repot participation shall be allowed when physical attendance is deemed unreasonably difficult, which should be only when one of the following circumstances is present. Personal illness or family, household member illness where the individual is contagious or attended recent close proximity to someone else who has tested positive for COVID or another contagious illness. Physical injury or other temporary personal disability that makes attendance of person difficult or impractical. Emergency, military service, or geographic distance due to circumstances outside of the council's control. This would not include vacations.
Well, that's what I don't like. I mean, a vacation is something that we take and we plan. Why, why are vacations excluded? I mean, I know, I'm seriously asking. Why is, why is it punitive to take a vacation? I think that's a normal activity that we do. Why is that a punitive thing?
I think that was something that the council president felt strongly about. And I think, I don't want to speak for her, but I think her reasoning was, we all know when the council meetings are, and if you voluntarily decide to be absent, then you're absent. And I think she was distinguishing between that and perhaps something going on in your family where you needed to travel, and you didn't really have control over the time. But again, I don't want to speak for her, and this is what the council.
That's the policy that we adopted.
Can we put that in here? Rather than keep referring to it? I mean, like, could we just put the?
We could. I was thinking about it, and part of the reason I didn't is because, and actually, the one that you're looking at is based on the law before COVID. So a lot of councils now have policies in their rules that we are probably not following because they're outdated. And so, because I think the open meeting law, the changes that were approved by the legislature for the oral meeting law, I think they're going to expire, I think, in February. And so the legislature's going to have to do something again. My guess is they just extend it further. But until we know, like, I would hate to, like, have something in the rules that then isn't, isn't up to date or right. Because if we went back to the rules that existed pre-COVID, there wouldn't be any remote participation, because under the rules pre-COVID, it's the executive officer of the town, meaning the town manager, who approves remote participation for the town boards, and it would be across the board. It would be, everybody gets to do it, or nobody gets to do it, and then it would be under the rules that existed pre-COVID. I very much doubt we're going back to that. But it's not entirely clear to me what the legislature's going to do when this expires. So I did think about incorporating it, but then I thought, maybe we should wait, because something might have to change depending on what they do.
Okay, well, it just makes it a little unwieldy to.
I mean, we could, we could attach it to this policy. And then, you know, as attached here to an Exhibit A or something. And then if it changes, or we need to change it, you know, we could deal with that. I don't know. I just, I thought it might be.
Well, how did you find that, Craig? What did you do?
Did you go to the town council?
I went to the February 15th.
That's what I'm saying, but that's.
That's why I put the date and the item number in here.
Right, I'm just saying, that's what we're forcing people to do. It doesn't seem like a very official place to put it.
But you're forcing the 13 counselors. I mean, we could hand the policy out to all of you along with the, I think there was an amendment that was approved at the meeting, so, you know. We can make sure you all have it. It applies to the 13 of you. It's not.
I know, but I would think that citizens would want to be aware of it.
They can, they can, they can easily find it. I mean, that's why I could only identify.
But what about the paper? We hit on the sentiment, thanks to that.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's just a question of, when you're approving the document, what is the document? The rules that you're recommending to the council that the council approves. And to me, that's a policy that is in effect now, may change if the law changes. You won't really want to change it essentially.
What do you all want to do?
An attachment, I think. Reasonable, it's something you can.
Yeah, I would think an attachment. If you don't want to put it in a body, I would go with an attachment. So people just don't have to chase all over the place.
Organization, organizational note. I'm wondering if on page two, where it refers to Rule 5, if we should call it Rule 5A. Because then it tells. Page two, at the bottom where it says Rule 5, that we should call it 5A, because it telegraphs that there are more sections. Yeah, because five, like, Rule 4 is standalone, and Rule 5 is standalone. And not till you flip the page, do you see that there's 5A to F?
I could do that.
Okay, make, make this 5A, have that a separate section, 5A and multiple sections.
Because when you first read it, it looks like it's, it's.
Part of the meetings and attendance.
It looks like it's entire, like, Rule 3 is entire, Rule 4 is entire, and Rule 5 is entire.
You'd have to redo the whole thing. I mean, 5 goes to 5, but.
I'll just renumber it.
Relettering, but, yeah.
I'll just move each one up one level down.
That instructs me that it tells you there's more that's related to meetings and attendance coming.
Yep. We do have something. No external references. We do have something similar in 11, but we sort of do like that general introduction in 11, and then we move to. I'll, I'll make it consistent, so that the section is all a sheet of, 11, yeah, and it says 11A, 11B instead of. I can make that 11A, make 11A, 11B, 11C.
When the council president chimes in the arrival of any counselor who joins the meeting late, how come we don't announce if a counselor leaves the meeting?
That, that jumped out at me, too.
Yeah, we should, we should. I mean, I just think, oh, and I don't know if in the meeting minutes. I can't remember specifically. I just didn't clock that.
It should be Counselor so-and-so left the room.
Yes.
Yeah, or, or came late for whatever reason. So I just think if they're, we're going to say that we know that they were late. Maybe we should be going, if they leave early.
Where are you?
I'm on the very last line of page two.
Okay.
On, on this.
Yeah, I see.
So would you expect it to also be noted if somebody leaves to go to the restroom and comes back?
No, but if a counselor permanently leaves.
Well, no, because I think we should note anytime anyone leaves. I mean, we had a counselor walk out of a meeting and come back like 40 minutes later. You know?
But do you really want to know if I left the meeting during public comment and I had to go to the bathroom?
We're not going to say why you left.
But I think it should be announced.
I'm just saying that it would be a short-term, we're not taking a vote.
Well, we don't know why you're leaving.
Right, I mean, the presiding officer would say Counselor Clark has, you know, left the meeting. Then when you return, you know, please note that Counselor Clark has returned. And then, you know, the town clerk can note the time in her minutes.
And I mean, I think as a general rule, people probably hopefully aren't leaving meetings for long durations. I guess if you're leaving for 40 minutes and you have, like, you're sick or ill, hopefully you make a decision to go home for your own best health and interests.
I mean, on the other hand, like, you know, if you're leaving the meeting for two seconds, I mean, the thing is here, you want to note the arrival of someone who joins the meeting late, because you want the record to show.
Without a speech.
Well, you know, who's attending the meeting, because when you started, that counselor wasn't there. And then if someone's, like, leaving for good, then you would say Counselor so-and-so, you know, has left the meeting. I'm not sure, like, for two seconds in the hall or to go to the restroom, that you necessarily need to do it. If it impacts the quorum, then, you know, we should be paying attention to that anyway.
Well, the clerk notes it always in the minutes. So-and-so left the guy.
Yeah, so she's keeping, she's keeping track, and I think.
Or, right?
Right, so I think if someone was showing up late and they haven't been at the meeting, you do want to announce that. And I think the AG's office wants you to do that. And I think if you're leaving for good, you know, for whatever reason, you would say so-and-so's left the meeting.
It just seems kind of silly, very disruptive if you have every, Craig speaking, and then, oh, Chris is going to the bathroom, and he stops and says, Counselor Clark has left the room. Come back. Counselor Clark has returned.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should have if any counselor joins the meeting late, or any counselor who leaves the meeting early.
That's fair. I think that is, that's practical.
If they come late, then it's reflected in the roll call. They're not there.
They're not there, but you don't know. But now you're saying, you know, which specific counselor is now, is now.
Or if they didn't get the roll call, but now they're on.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, if you show up late to the meeting, or if you leave for good early, I think that should be noted.
Thank you.
Oh, right above that, I don't understand that second paragraph. I've never heard this ever said at any meeting.
Which one?
The duties of the presiding officer. Questions of order subject to appeal by the council by any motion regularly seconded shall be put as follows.
Where am I?
We're sorry.
On page two, we're on page two.
I'm, we're reading the, this.
The duties of the presiding officer.
She's not reading the redline one.
I'm reading the clean one.
Rule 4, we're in Rule 4.
Okay, okay.
I don't, it says, yeah, section four. Second paragraph, duties of the presiding officer. Questions of order subject to appeal to the council by any motion regularly seconded shall be put as follows. Shall the decision of the chair stand as the judgment of the council? What is that even referring to?
What that refers to is there's a point of order, right? Someone says point of order, and the presiding officer rules. And you think that's wrong. You can have the council vote to overrule the chair, and that's what this is. So the chair presides over the meeting and makes rulings on points of order as a matter of course. But if you or any individual counselor takes issue with the ruling and says, no, I don't think that's right, then you would make this motion, and then the council could take a vote. Because at the end of the day, the council votes as a body and can overrule the chair, but the chair is there to.
Can you give me an example of when the chair did this?
I can't think of any time that I've been here when it's happened, but it's, it's very, this is the way it works.
So, yeah, say, for instance, if I make a point of order.
Let's make up a case.
Well, so if I, when I get irritated and then I say, Rule 6B.
That will never.
We don't have the antidote.
So point of order, then I cite Rule 6B, whatever. And then Felicia says, okay, noted, taken, or whatever she said. And then that would make you decline. You then say, does that, shall that decision, the decision of the chair stand as the judgment of the council? And then we would have a roll call vote, which then it was seven to six, whatever, saying that they agree. Then.
The council by vote could overrule. The council could, by vote, overrule the chair. But you would do that, I think, in extraordinary circumstances, because in general, the chair makes those rulings on points of order and presides over the meeting. But the chair is not a dictator. The council is a body. You could say, no, we don't agree with that, and overrule the chair.
But don't we vote on that anyway?
I think we did that once.
We had double vote.
6B.
Well, then I would, I would then move the question or something. That was usually what.
No, it's not, it's not something on which you're taking a vote. It's something where it's point of order. You know, so-and-so is speaking out of turn or whatever, and you say, no, you know, they're allowed to speak right now. Like, it's not, it's not something you're voting on. It's something that you're ruling on as the presiding officer. And if, whatever it is, you know, you think it's just so dead wrong, you could say, you know, is, does the council agree with this? Or whatever the wording here is to make that motion, to say, I'd like a vote on this. I think that's wrong.
Because you could cite any of these things as a point of order, more or less, that exist in the rules. Like, you could take any tab, say, our counselor code of conduct, and I, you could be saying something, Seth, you're an idiot, I think you're whatever, and I could say, point of order, code of conduct. And then Felicia, Craig, whoever, would say, I agree, or whatever, however you phrase it, and then you would stop.
And then I would say, shall the, shall the.
Right, and then we would vote on it. And then if it was in your favor, then you would continue to let ask any other.
Right, but if you say, like, someone's talking too long on something, shouldn't they be limited to three minutes or whatever it is? And then the chair rules on that, and you go, oh, that's wrong, you know, can we vote on that? You can do that. You could overrule the chair.
Yeah, but I don't know that it makes sense to, did you guys all understand that that was what that meant? You did?
Yeah.
All right.
I'm like, every time I come to that meeting.
Yeah. Well, I found it a little bit confusing.
Because it all has to do with Robert's rules, or whatever makes.
Whatever rule you're using. I mean, it's pretty much the same as, you know, the chair presides, but not, not in a vacuum, basically.
It's, it's like parliamentary procedures. Sort of, quality.
So actually, the meetings and attendance, okay, so we covered that. I added that as well based on the last meeting. Oh, no, that's not it. It says notify the president if you can't make the meeting. And so the second, at the top of page three on redline version, the paragraph that starts, except for emergencies, that was in response to what you all had asked for the last meeting, which was to note, notify the president if you can't make the meeting. And then if you're running late, if you're able to notify, you know, you should do that, but it says, shall make every effort.
I have a question on, where there's Rule 5B on the redline version, page.
My 5B or your 5B?
Yeah, I know.
Your 5B or your old 5B?
My 5B.
The old 5B on page six.
Yeah.
At the top, on the redline version. Yeah, no, I know, but I guess.
Well, it's 5B, and you can actually see what I did.
I've got the different, different page of it. There's a, it says, and I've always known that the council shall meet on the first and third Thursdays of each month, except in July and August. But we're already proposing to change the dates in December. Isn't that true, Craig? There's a request to change, to move the third Thursday to the second evening. And the rules don't have a provision for that, or I don't, I don't read it that way.
Yeah, I thought there was some, let me see.
We talked about.
Yeah, I thought we could, I'm trying to see where it is. Maybe it's not here. We have, like, if a regular meeting day falls on holiday, she'll make every effort to reschedule to Thursday, make sure it's another day. Now, I think it's within, because this is the regular meeting schedule.
That's true, okay.
You know.
Well, technically, it's a regular meeting.
Well, it's a regular meeting, but I think it's also, now, let me just see if there's something.
Well, I think, I think what we're, we're probably, you know, the way around it is to say, whether we get around, let's, we want to make an appointment on. Well, I think, I think what we're, we're probably, you know, the way around it is to say, whether we get around, let's, we'll make an appointment on the first meeting. Is we just have a motion to suspend the rules and move it from the nineteenth to the twelfth, just to the nineteenth to the twelfth.
That's fine with me, I'm just saying that, that you know, rules, I want to make sure that, when will they be changed?
Or we could just, our sentence saying, the, you know, the president may reschedule the meet, may reschedule a meeting if circumstances warrant. You know, because that, we're rescheduling it because we're not gonna have a quorum.
There's a bit of no quorum issue.
Well, we, we scheduled one of the meetings because Juneteenth and you have a one.
But that falls within the holiday thing, that's already in.
This is a different reason.
But I guess my point is, is I know that it was a holiday, but it wasn't changed in any real official manner. I guess I would like it to be a little more clean, like.
I know, but this, the way this reads now, if a regular meeting date falls on a solemn or legal holiday, the president shall make every effort to reschedule such meetings to the Thursday of the following week, but may choose another day if warranted by the circumstances. We could just add something saying, you know, if, if regular meeting may be rescheduled, you know, if, if circumstances warrant. And I can put in some example, like, including, for example, if, you know, there'll be a lack of a quorum or something.
And I would like, instead of the Thursday of the following week, to another Thursday. Because in this case, we backed it up, I don't think the following week, I would just say another Thursday.
Okay.
Without.
I'm sorry to jump back.
Sure.
But on rule four.
Yeah.
I was setting it one side.
Duties to the presiding officer.
Yeah. I'm going on page two of the red line.
What paragraph?
It's rule four, so duties of the.
The second paragraph, where it says, questions of order subject to appeal.
That's what we were just talking about, yeah.
Okay, shall the decision of the chair, that was just?
That's what we just started. That's what we were just talking about.
Because I've never heard, I've never heard that stated.
This is really kind of basic, you know, in the territory.
Ten bucks if you get two.
Yeah, okay, fine, got it, that's what I thought, I just wanted to. I was looking up the difference. Okay, there we go.
It's okay, all right, so we covered, if council's ten, we covered rule. And I'm attaching that as an exhibit, I just wanna make sure. Rule eleven C.
What did we move on?
I think, before that, on page eleven, I deleted the word full. Actually, I don't know what this is now. It is what I mentioned.
Well, under rule eleven, for seventh, there's.
I think so, yeah, so rule eleven, committees of the council, we took out the word full. So it says, after the organization of the council, the president's subject to approval by the council, not by the full council. That, I think, county, luckily we asked for that. So that changes rule, then rule eleven C. Liaison, so there's a lot of new stuff there, if you wanna take a few minutes to look at that. I think it was Amherst. So I combined some of that with some of what we had talked about, so.
Our understanding committees of the council is.
You mean on this side? You mean one of them listed on here?
No, neither.
Oh, yeah, on the boards, committees, and commissions page, that very long did. Is that what, understanding committees of the council, isn't it just ad hoc? So not just the three?
No.
No, it's like forty-one, you mean all forty-one of them, is that what you're talking about?
However, many are actually council committees.
No, there's the appointments committee, the tip, the tie, has three council members on it. And the rest currently are ad hoc, that have sunset dates.
And we have a new ad hoc, the CW one three committee.
Right, those ad hocks, that's.
That's ad hoc, that has a sunset, yeah, so we only have basically.
Truly aren't.
Standing committees. That are always, you know.
So that one, I ruined my plug, huh? What's, what was that?
What are the standing committees?
Yeah, the standing committees are just the appointments committee, and the ad hoc.
Yeah, that's the body that appoints to the rest of the forty-one. Appointments committee, appoints to the other boards, committees, and commissions, so that's, that's why it's a standing one. And then the tip and tie, that that meets only when there's an application submitted through the planning and development department. It doesn't get submitted to the council, it goes through planning and development, and then we get a, an ask to set up the meeting. But that has a number of nine on it, three councillors that.
I don't think I would commit to the, to listing the committees, because ad hoc committee on committees has yet to meet, and that may change.
See, it's a group.
Yeah.
What was the purpose of listing the committees on this?
This, that's what you're saying, is to put a whole?
No, 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 no.
I wouldn't say, I was gonna say, this, but I just wondered which ones were actually standing. But we don't, no, I know it's.
Well, you know, it's not a bad, I mean, Amherst does that, they just have four standing committees, that would be a huge lift. I mean, it wouldn't clarify it for folks, it's not really intuitive.
But that may change from the committee, committees, gets done with, their work.
We redo it these next year, two years.
Yeah.
But at least we have a placeholder, I mean, you know, this thing should be changing certainly more frequently than it has been.
Well, to be honest with you, there are a couple of committees, they, table TV, T.
No, I'm not talking about, is that a standing committee? I'm talking about standing.
It's on our books, it has.
No, but.
Standing committees, the council versus a board committee, a commission that functions as a delegation of the council.
I see what you're saying. Standing committees of it.
But I'm confused, and Chris is confused, that probably means most of our public.
That's what I think, you have to think of it as public.
I'm confused by what's confusing, honestly.
Well, I mean, to understand what the standing committees are, I don't think that's a heavy lift to put on the.
I know what you mean, I mean, I understand, I guess. We put them right there. Yeah, I mean, we know that the, the point is, it's not gonna go. The tie and tip is not gonna go anywhere, because it's required. It won't, it won't, can you go with it there?
There's only two.
Only two, then?
Yeah.
Currently, but you guys have talked about putting together.
Yeah, we're not gonna list the ad hoc.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe the point that, there has been discussion here, that you may want to make just committees, like, standing committees. Always have something that we're gonna rule on a, on a regular basis. But right now, there's only two.
Yeah, I'll put a bullet under here that says what, or a new section of the sole rule, it's not a rule, it's a point of information.
I mean, keep in mind, these are the town council rules of procedure, it's not necessarily everything.
They have a link, it's not like you're right to it.
Glossary or index of the towns.
Karen, I can ask web request to identify the standing committees on our town council webpage and just list the two committees that are considered standing.
That might be a better, better approach, you would have it on the website.
And then they can see, so the agendas.
To the extent that you're, that the public's not knowing. They're not running to the town council rules to figure something like that out. And again, these are rules of procedure of all of you, so that might be a better way to trust that.
Thanks, Cindy.
Yeah, because right now, all five of the subcommittees are listed separately on our town council webpage, so they all have a, it's just an ad hoc subcommittee. And I can separate out the two standing committees from the rest of them to be at the top of the town council webpage, so that the public is aware of. And I'll have IT put on standing committees of the town council.
Because right now, those committees are under the other.
Correct.
Yeah, not that all the other.
That's true, and that's good.
Yes.
Very, yeah, that, that would be, that would be good. Okay, so back to the liaison section.
Do we need any discussion or questions about that?
I don't get three twelve.
What page are you?
Right, with our scene of red line.
I mean.
Rule eleven C.
Yeah. It's become, we have, what did we have before, it was very short.
There was nothing, there was really nothing on the rule, nothing on the liaison. And I would get questions from time to time, and it would be, there's nothing on.
No, I guess, oh, it's the same one. Sure.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and then, then where we left off last time was with inquiries and investigations. And we looked further into it and discovered that in addition to Barnstable having this, pretty much most of the other town council rules, they have something similar. And again, our town council, actually, our charter has one, which, about subpoena power, so that comes from the charter. And chapter two thirty-three, section eight of chapter two thirty-three of the general laws, actually addresses this. And it talks about the various bodies that have the authority to summon witnesses. And it says, witnesses may be summoned to attend and testify and to produce books and papers at a hearing before a city council or either branch thereof, whatever that means, or before a joint or special committee of the same or of either branch thereof, or before a board of selectmen, a board of police commissioners, a fire commissioner, a board of fire commissioners, a commissioner of public safety, a school board, the alcohol beverages control commission, a licensing board or licensing authorities, a board of registrar, registrars of voters, the police commissioner or election commissioners of Boston, the mass, the MWRA, the state racing commission, the parole board, or a board of appeals designated or appointed under section thirty of chapter forty as to matters within their authority. And such witnesses shall be summoned in the same manner, be paid the same fees, and be subject to the same penalties for default as witnesses in civil cases before the courts. The presiding officer of such council or any of these bodies may administer oaths to witnesses who appear before such council, committee board commissioner, commissioner respectively. So that authority is codified in state law and it comes from our charter, so it's not unusual.
Yeah, I think how it's written is fine, I still think that we would ever do this.
I, I think you really would use it in extraordinary circumstances.
Something extraordinary, but I think how you've written it is fine, I, I'm sure that's okay. One thing that I'd like to look at, Karen, that came up today, the agenda, the rule six F. The Amherst one, I don't know, you can hand this to you or look it up. They, they talk about three things under reconsideration. And it kind of addresses what one of the councillors brought up today, so I don't know.
I don't know if maybe, if you wanna do this here, but.
Yeah, because it's in, it's in the Amherst ones, and I don't think they just pulled it out of thin air, it must be. I don't know if you wanna look it up yourselves, you wanna see what I.
I can just take a look at the.
Yeah, just take a look, because I think they, they, they lay it out nicely, and I think it addresses what was discussed today.
For summarizing for me.
Well, let me look at it to see if, if I've got it right, I think it nails what was being requested today.
Yeah, I mean, I think, well, it's certainly worth talking about, because I know Mason's, there's, I don't think it's uniform that the motion has to be made by someone from the prevailing side.
Right, that's what I'm saying, it gave, this is very clean there.
I'm talking about motions for reconsideration.
Right. You only give one rule here, but it may be broader.
Right, and I think I have Mason's with me, I didn't look at it specifically about this yet today, but I have some follow-up that I'm going to be doing. But I believe when I looked in the past, it references that some bodies do that, but that's not a hard enough. The Mason's isn't a hard enough rule anyway, it's guidance for town. But our rules do specifically, at least the way they're written now, do specifically address it. Because I didn't change anything here, and it says, it shall be in order for a council who has voted with the prevailing side. So we can certainly change that, that's, that can be.
Freedom of.
Yeah, I mean, it can be changed, right, but I'm just saying, there's no right or wrong, it's really how you wanna do it.
It, it gives a broader, I think.
I don't know if you wanna read that out loud.
You want to, but.
Yeah.
I mean, the first one is kind of like yours, but then the second.
Do you want me to read it, you wanna read it?
Sure, go ahead.
Motions for reconsideration, motions from the prevailing side. Any council voting with the prevailing side of any measure, may move for reconsideration. In the case of a measure decided by a tie vote, a councillor voting in the negative will be considered as voting with the prevailing side. Motion shall be in order at the same time or at the next regular meeting following the vote on the measure. B, motions from the non-pervailing side. Any councillor voting with the non-pervailing side of any measure may move for reconsideration when such motion is accompanied by the submission of new or additional information. The motion shall be in order at the next regular meeting following the vote on the measure. Debate in time, a motion for reconsideration is debatable only as to the reasons for reconsideration is not amendable. No more than one motion for reconsideration of the vote on a measure shall be entertained. And they also have a motion to rescind or amend something previously adopted, which is another, another measure. First thing that strikes me about that and B, which is what, so you're, what you're saying is that you should have a B part that allows the non-pervailing side? So who's the arbiter of information? So is any information, is, who would be the arbiter of the information? So I say, whatever the topic is, and I was on the non-pervailing side of that, and I'm extremely unhappy about that. And so I find something that is either germane to that topic or is not germane to that topic, I bring it in, and this is new. It's about the right way else, and we're voting about something else, do you see what I'm saying? So is it just, and who's the arbiter of whether the information is germane? Whether it is of magnitude that would be reasonable to, you know, to even consider reconsideration?
Please let it not be new.
Yeah, right, most, like, because I, I mean.
I agree with you, Seth, it doesn't say, like, information.
It just says information, I wonder about how the, how that works in their setting.
It's, it's accompanied, yeah. They. It's accompanied by the submission of new or additional information, it doesn't say who it's submitted to. I mean, I think if we, if they wanted to be, I think we would need to have, you know, it needs to be submitted to town council leadership. I'm assuming that on some level, town council leadership might be somewhat involved in that.
So what I wanted to just.
Or maybe it's provided to the entire council, not to be debated, but just to be shared, I don't.
So what Mason says is, it is a common practice to provide by rule that a motion to reconsider can be made only by a member who voted on the prevailing side of the question. This is so frequently provided by rule that it is sometimes supposed to be a rule, supposed to be a rule of parliamentary law. Then it goes on to talk about that, then it says, some legislative bodies specifically provide by rule that the motion to reconsider may be made by any member. And so the general rule is the way we have it, but that's not hard enough.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm just asking, because of the discussion today, Craig, you were there today, that what would be the harm in, in having that, but.
I think it might, I mean, the harm, this is maybe too strong a word, but I think it would introduce or could possibly introduce a situation. but I think it would introduce or could possibly introduce a situation where you have a never-ending double jeopardy going on. You know what I mean? In, in legal terms, you know, double jeopardy, if you've been acquitted of a crime. That, you know, you can't just continue to, to go after or rehash a thing once it has been adjudicated or legislated. You know what I mean?
No, I, no, I agree with you, but I think the point is submission of, what is it?
New or additional information. I mean, that's what I think.
I think you're adding a level of complexity there. It's not necessary. I, I, I think it should be the prevailing side. I mean, if you lose, you lose. And if, but if you, if somebody on the prevailing side says, well, maybe something wasn't understood, or maybe I would have changed my vote, or whatever. Then you can have a motion for reconsideration. If that motion, then it has to pass, because no, so you need to reconsider it, or you don't. Now, you, you made a comment this morning, that if we do have a motion for reconsideration, that, that automatically voids the vote, or?
Yes, that's my understanding, because when I've looked at this in the past, and I've said, I can sort of find it. Yeah.
Plus, the vote is upheld upon.
Well, that's it.
So you can reconsider it on the. I think when a vote is reconsidered, that vote is canceled as completely as though it had never been taken. Definitely, so.
So when Seth says, who is the arbiter of information? What you just said, you're taking that vote on the reconsideration, so you all are. So you feel as though that's not enough when you're making that vote.
Yeah, I think specifically what I was talking about was, on the non-pervailing side, if they come back with new information. You know, I kind of would be opposed to that, for the simple reason that, I mean, what, who's now, who's now making determination?
But she's saying that the town council would vote on that new information being germane to actually allow a reconsideration.
Well, I think it would be part of the decision, like in your personal vote, if you think, I don't think that that's new, I'm going to vote no on that motion. I think like if I brought forward, I'm on the losing side, and I bring forward, right whales are dying at five times the amount than they said they were, using that as an example. And the whole council takes a vote on what I'm bringing forward, is that what you're saying? Then the vote would be based on that new information, then you take a vote to reconsider?
Just, just be clear. Yeah, I would, I would say, you're not voting on the new information, but you're taking into consideration that iteration.
That's what I'm saying. So you would present it as the losing side, and then the vote for reconsideration would be held. I don't even know if that's how that vote works.
Yeah, and I am looking further, um, subject to this.
Okay, I just wondered if we wanted to think about it because it came up today. And that's what I, and then I, I saw this, and I saw that, and it's like, wait.
Yeah, I, I tend to think that obviously, you know, it's up to all of you that the way we have it, I think, probably works, but that's. You know, the one thing that happens a lot is our rule says, you're supposed to make that motion at the meeting of the vote or give notice at that meeting that you will ask for a motion at the next meeting. So in the case that we're talking about, if we were to do that, then you would have to suspend that portion of the rule because the council won't give notice.
What if?
But it may not, I'm still, I'm still thinking for some.
I had, I had, I rewrote this today also earlier. So, I was thinking if. To move for immediate reconsideration or to serve notice that a motion for reconsideration shall take place in the next regular meeting at the council. There's no real mechanism for that. What if you just said a vote for reconsideration shall be made at?
Or at.
Or at the next.
I actually like that.
I think that's meeting the council without having a serve notice. So you have one council meeting to reconsider, and if it goes past that, no.
Yeah, so it's.
It's luck, queen.
I, I like that better, too.
Can you say, Karen?
So it shall be in order for any council who has voted with the prevailing side to move for immediate reconsideration or to make a motion for reconsideration at the next regular council meeting of the council.
Yes.
I, I think that's better.
Much better.
Yeah, I like that better, too. I think it's, it's more workable.
And then, Al, you were saying, as soon as this is brought forward, it makes the vote null and void, or we're voting to reconsider? There's two votes.
If you vote to reconsider.
Oh, I thought you were saying something like that.
No, no, no.
It says, when a vote is, is reconsidered, that vote is canceled as completely as though it had never been taken. So that's what I was explaining earlier, is if there's a motion to reconsider whatever vote.
And it passed.
And if that motion passes.
Oh, I get it.
That right is, that vote is wiped out, and now you're starting to hold that.
Okay. Done it. Okay, that, that makes me feel more comfortable.
Yeah, I think that's. There, I say.
Well, I had a couple of things that, that I liked. I can throw them out there to add.
I did, too, but I didn't.
No, I, I think this is really good. It's so much better than it was, so much cleaner. But again, I went through Amherst, and I kind of compared it. And there's a few things that I liked in Amherst. I'm sure this first one, people are going to say no way. But it had to do with district meetings. And it said, counselors from each of the districts shall convene a minimum of two meetings in their districts each year, open to all residents. The purpose is to facilitate two-way communication between the town government and district residents. Residents may submit topics to district councils in advance. Meetings must include ample time for public discussion, comments, questions, suggestions.
And what rule number is that?
That's a five, 5.5. I think it speaks to, and I go back to our strategy document. And if those of us, some of us here haven't participated in that strategy document. But in the strategy document, it lays out stuff. And when you get to the communications section of the strategy document, it's like, oh, we could do this, we could do. It's like a bunch of suggestions of like, we really have a problem. And I liked this. That it puts a burden on a town counselor to reach out, but I like that. I think there should be a burden to communicate with your constituents. So I just wanted to throw that out for discussion. If people thought that that was. Was something that they might want to consider. Maybe one meeting, I don't know. I think two meetings is.
Yeah, I think two meetings is excessive. Now, some councils, for example, hold office hours.
Right.
Two weeks or once a month, whatever.
Yeah.
It's big. I mean, would that satisfy it? Or should it be a more broad statement that counselors shall.
Endeavor.
Endeavor to. Meet with constituents at, at least once per calendar year or something like that.
I mean, I do office hours every month. I have 12 meetings a year, then. Plus anybody who calls down the phone, because everybody gets seen for it.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I don't know. Counselors who don't meet with their constituents do so, like they don't apparel.
Yeah.
But I think that he's asking that we maybe need to have a more formal mechanism to make ourselves. Yeah.
It sounds like everyone's coming back with office hours.
I don't think it's a rule we can enforce.
I'm sorry.
I don't think it's a rule we can enforce. I don't think.
Well, there are things in here that you can't enforce that are aspirational. I mean, the code of conduct is aspirational, but it's a statement by the council that this is how we want to conduct ourselves, assuming we all pass this. You know what I mean? So not everything's enforceable in that sense. And it's really a statement of expectations.
You can do one and say, one informational meeting. I don't know. I mean, I don't know, for. I'm not sold on that.
So what's that, was it you that, if you don't, you're not available, that's your peril?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're, you're setting yourself up for failure, and people will notice that. I mean.
To me, it's a little, it's a little different than the rules of procedure for the council. It's kind of getting into telling each of you how to be a counselor. And I'm not sure that that necessarily should be governed by this document, but, you know, I defer all of your.
Because then you can say, well, you should, should be, I mean, you, all your precincts have civic associations. I go to my board every, every month. You might not say, well, you got to attend the civic association board meetings. Or you got to hold office hours. I mean, even that might be more of a get, for, easier for people than. Than, like, I imagine, set hosts a meeting, and then they're going to be the MC, and they're all going to show up on the. Board and say, this is what's been going on up town. This is what, you know what I mean? Is that what we're thinking? Is that what you're thinking? Or get up and say, okay, yell at me now, because I'm right here, and you're all there?
Are you reacting to some of the public comments of the last meeting?
I think so. I think I reacted to that, and I'm reacting to that strategy document. It's, it's an ongoing issue. We seem to have, what we always say, we're never talking to the right people. That used to be the mantra. It's not so much the mantra anymore, but.
You know, in all the years, well, so, I mean, this isn't a sign, but I mean, like, it's something, I mean, you know, I did all night, but. You know, in every municipal thing that I've ever been involved in. I have gotten to, and I'm talking about, I've been in fire districts for five or six years, whatever, in a number of different things. And you get to the end of any process, and you meet a bunch of people who say, why didn't you tell me that?
I heard of this.
How could I, how could you have gotten to this? How did you do it all behind closed doors without me knowing it? You know, I can't believe the lack of transparency this year. You know, and you.
So well-measured.
Yeah, more, sometimes, 24, 36 meetings, however many informational sessions, how many mailers, how many this. And we see it here in the town every single day, that I'm involved in this municipality, which is that you can beat it to death. And then you'll have a constituent who will say, I can't believe how disingenuous you've been. Because I had known this was happening. I had nothing. So, anyway, so I mean, there's, how much can you throw in? That's my question.
Yeah.
Like, how far can you? How do you, short of knocking on every last person and get to it, or?
Right, no, it's very hard. And I know you do a newsletter.
I agree with Karen, though, that. That this is how the town council should conduct its business.
Yeah.
Without telling the counselor. What they, how to be a counselor. Some people are, you know. And. And have different availability.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to bring it up. I'm not really hard over. I thought it was, it was intriguing that they put it in there. And they also put in about consent agendas. We don't have anything in here about that. And I thought that was kind of good to have that, because that's something new this time. That we might want to codify in the rules, because that does help move things along. They had a rather large section on the consent agenda.
Yeah, and we recently voted that, so.
We did, yeah, so maybe that should be codified.
That's a big point.
Yeah.
What else do you have, Chris?
What, what do I have? Oh, no, no, I did my thing, and then it's going to be whatever, whatever like it says. Whatever you saw in the other.
Well, here's one other thing that they, they had under the rules of the, the president. It said, each year, the president and the town manager shall address the elected bodies, officers of the town, and the public on the, well, Amherst State of Affairs. And I was intrigued by that, too, you know, since we don't have the town meeting.
Read it again, please.
It said, each year, the president and the town manager shall address the elected bodies, officers of the town, and the public on the Amherst State of Affairs, kind of the State of the Union.
They used to do that.
John Clem.
John Clem, and it was a, like, semi-formal affair.
Oh, man, it was, it was a show.
It was a show. And it was like, you got the kid.
On the other hand, we have not been putting out a town report. Not right back to the town manager. I think the last one was 2018.
Oh, really?
Yeah, because of COVID. There was nobody in 2019, 2020 to put it together or to do any of it, because we were all remote and unsure of how.
We haven't been doing that, the annual report, that I would think is accountability to the public.
I think it might be nice.
And they worked, and she used it that.
Yeah, no, it might be.
It is coming out this year. They have done it.
Okay.
In fact, I was asked to, IT, get your photos for the book, so.
Finally.
It is coming out.
That's right.
We're going to be official.
But because we are, and I hate to use this phrase, because now there's a legal framework for seasonal community. You know, it might be nice to do it in July or August, because we have all of our seasonal residents.
Nobody wants to go to meetings in July or August. I'm, I'm, I know the problem. That's why they reduce the meetings.
I mean, I guess the question would be, would we want to videotape it, and then people could just access it?
That's a good idea. I don't think it's part of our pony show procedures.
No, we, no, we don't have it. I just think it would be a nice lead-in if, if, you know, in theory, we review the strategy every year, you know, to just lay it out. It just, it, I don't know. I have never seen it, you've seen it, in some sort of format, whether that might be the one.
Fred wants to do it, then.
No.
He has a template, Fred.
Yeah.
I don't want, I do not like that, either.
Neither did I.
It was.
Well, it shouldn't just be a jogging pony show.
It was exactly what it was.
Show vote about the town manager.
It loses its value, you know?
The town council sitting behind them, like. It was, and then it would be, this year, we celebrate this particular person who did something, you know, notable in the year. And the spotlight would come, it was at the high school.
I actually think the real stuff is probably in the budget document.
Yeah.
In terms of accomplishments.
Right.
Yeah, because we all have to submit to the, every department. Finance department, every department head, including myself, with everything that goes in that report.
So when, when you submit your sections to, for the budget aspect, are those submissions public information? Or do we just see the final product where they take and cut and paste? And that's what we get? Like, I'm just wondering, is having those smaller reports.
I think those reports are.
Do they, they literally go into that?
That's how, yeah, that's what they do, and they yell at us when we don't get it out.
You get the right, see, it's the town manager's job to put together the budget, and submit a recommended budget to the town council, which then can be amended. It can be amended down, not up, but.
The budget narrative, I think, they, they take what each department. That's my experience.
Yeah, I just don't know if they doctored it or changed it or cut it out, because they weren't going to add this stuff or the other thing.
I think what Christine's referring to is, what was, what was cut out? And what was, what did the staff choose to put forward to us? And what, what, what would we choose to keep instead? Is that what you?
I guess I'm just, like, if we have ex-departments, and DPW hands them their thing, and the other group hands them their thing, and then the town manager, does he make any edits to those, or he just takes some and puts some?
A team rank.
Well, it, it gets, it.
No, you're talking about capital projects in terms of ranking. I'm talking about the budget narrative. And I'm just going to speak for myself, because I oversee this process. But my understanding and what I've witnessed is, each department is asked, you know, by whatever name, submit your budget narrative, and it's supposed to include accomplishments and significant achievements. You know, we submit that, and then that's what gets included in the budget document.
Correct, so all the requests are there, but there's one column, department requested $100,000 for cruises. Next column is, town major recommends $80,000 for cruises, that type of thing. So I mean, the requests are there, but there's also recommended, because it's, he has to come up with a balanced budget.
But that's separate from the narrative, which just sets forth.
Yeah, which is like the summary of the State of the Union for each of the departments.
Yes, that's there.
Yeah, so that, that's kind of like what you're talking about.
That's what I'm just talking about. I don't believe there's any editing, because no one wants to deal with it. It's like, yeah, your information's wiped in the budget document.
I'm just saying, if somebody wanted to know what's going on in the state.
I would, I would read the budget.
They could read those summaries, and they would have a really good idea.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think that's quite a great source of information. Yeah, it's.
Well, and the other one?
Well, the only other thing is upfront, when you said amending or appealing these rules to require majority, you got a vote of the full council. And again, the Amherst one, they said, prior to final passage, proposed amendments shall be read at two separate meetings. Is that required, Karen, or not? Why, why, why they put that?
Well, I think it's. It's something you could choose to do. Like, we do have in our rules, certain items that require two reads that are not technically measures. Like the administrative code. When we make changes to the administrative code, it's not a measure, because it's really, it's not considered the ordinances of the town. But we still require in our rules that we do them as two reads. So you could make this two reads. It wouldn't magically turn this into a measure. It would just add a little more process. Just like appointments. Appointments are not measures, but the rules say they're two reads.
Well, what, what do you guys think? I mean.
I think that's a good idea, that amending these should require two, two reads.
I think it's, 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 it's a good idea.
I think it is, too, one way.
Gives the public an extra opportunity to lay eyes on it if they're not there.
It gives the public an extra opportunity to lay eyes on it if they're not there.
It also gives that council a little more time to think about.
Well, no, yeah, because like, you know, sort of showing up and saying, I think really.
They're not the hunters here for these rules, but you guys are.
Yeah.
And does, since you struck four from the other provision, does it have to be the full council?
I think it should be because these are the rules. That's my personal opinion. You guys can change it, but, um, I think you want, a majority vote of the full council is seven councillors. I think you would want that if you're, if you're doing stuff to the rules that govern you, that that you, you know, discuss and decide if you think differently.
But if there's absence of the full council.
The council is still seven, whether the people there are not. Yeah.
You've got a nine house, let's say, but you still.
That's why when you look at the agenda and you look at appropriations, it always says majority vote, full council, because the charter says, says that. And so it's, you have to have the seven votes. It doesn't matter. It's not a majority present voting. As opposed to what it says.
Seven, not six.
Okay, so I'll also add to rule. I'm going to add to rule 15 where it says the following, I can make the acts of conduct first reading. And then the prior first and second reading. I'm going to add amendment equals.
This is just a typo, not a typo. That's true. Rule 16 is not bold. On this, yeah, it's not.
And when when we really think we're done, I'll clean it up. I haven't done that because as we add stuff, it just doesn't make sense.
And I think I have some suggestions from all the others, but I didn't bring them because I didn't think we were going to get to them.
Well, I think we're close to, I mean, yeah. Maybe at the next meeting, we could probably clean this up. Yeah.
That's half the job because we also look at the code too.
That would be half done, the mode of.
I actually think that this is awesome in terms of getting this done.
I think we have the time to do that. I mean, I think we're okay, right?
Sure.
Yeah.
We're maybe supposed to end.
Well, we're getting extended. I guess the thing is January 34th, right, at the end of January.
Yeah.
I'm I'm proud of the work we've done and for you guys to have been left here.
Yeah, I just want to, we have a public commentary provided this and, you know, I think we did, you did ask, I don't think. I know we did ask the attorney over to put this in. I think it's aspirational.
Yep.
They put this code of conduct and I think it's based on things I think I, well, I've seen happen, like the cell phones and things. And we shouldn't have to say it, but I think it's nice to remind people in there. Uh, you talk about enforceability. Can we enforce this? Probably not, but it's something, it'd be nice to remind people of the proper decorum in the meeting.
And I have to, there is value to making aspirational statements.
There is, yes.
You know, sort of setting the tone of how you'd like the body to conduct itself.
Yeah. So, you know, I looked through what Larry submitted here. He made some good points, but I think, uh, I'm okay with this is written. I reviewed it, you know, fairly thoroughly and I'm okay. But we can certainly, you know, take these home, take, take a look at it and come back next time. Yeah.
But this came from all of you.
Yeah.
I moved to adjourn.
Wait. We need to.
Do the minutes and we need to think about the next meeting.
Thank you.
I would like to say something about the code piece. What, what is the sense of the timeline for the code piece?
Well, the timeline for the committee is the end of January. Yeah, you have to ask for.
Knowing that we were moving forward on this, I, I have to present differently extended to the general. But it doesn't mean we can't extend it. I just thought we were making progress on this. And to be honest with you, I was also appointed to the asset committee, ad hoc committee, and committees, committee on committees, both of which have not yet met. I'm anticipating that.
Yeah, I've I've talked with Felicia about extending those committees. And I've suggested that because there is no chair, to ask for an extension, that she pick a time period and make it starting with the date the committee first meets. So rather than a deadline of a specific date to say, you know, those two committees should meet in the beginning of the next year or whatever, she wants them to get started and and they will have X number of months from the date of their first meeting.
Well, you put that in the rules. That's in the.
I thought we put that in.
We do. Yeah, but that's what I suggested she do for the two committees.
Yeah, but that's a great, I think, approach. And then we also put about having two committees.
Yeah.
Because I've seen it, just doesn't, you can't.
Yeah.
So could you, moving on to, or anything else for Cindy, regarding this? I said any, any other discussion for the meeting? So how about, um?
So before I clean it up though, it sounds like we'll have one more meeting.
I, well, I just.
Or do you want to guess? Well.
Do you, do you want me to give the suggestions ahead of the meeting? I mean, I don't know that it's much. I I might just be as simple as what Betty did and if there's anything that comes from it, it'll probably be mine.
Yeah, send it to Karen.
I mean, I can incorporate it, subject to whether you guys like it or not, obviously.
Why don't you do that? I think that's a better way. It's much easier to have it in front of us.
Why don't you do this? Why don't you submit it to Cindy? Any, anything they were thinking?
Yeah.
Any of us, anything, any change to Cindy and should distribute it. That way you can look at it before the meeting.
And did you?
Yeah, I think I'm all set. I mean, I won't say entirely I'm all set, but I I I reviewed this. I thought very carefully and I'm very happy with it. And I pulled out a few from Amherst that I felt were pertinent that might help us.
That they're a very, um, helpful resource.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Yeah, that stuff is in good shape.
Very nice. Very nicely done.
Yeah.
Thought that was Karen.
Okay, so, yeah, can we look at the minutes? Any adjusted changes? Is that good? Second, I want to favor, except in the minutes is written. And I'm upset because I was.
Me too.
Okay, and about, um, the next meeting date.
I personally want something a little bit earlier rather than later, uh, because December.
You mean earlier in the month?
Earlier, early, well, not go to the end of the member.
I think it depends on the attorneys and their voting to do the edits we talked about.
We go maybe November 12?
Is that the holiday? Is that?
No.
Monday's the holiday.
Yeah, Monday, Tuesday, November.
Um, we have an appointments meeting on the 12th.
Yeah.
Okay.
Why do I have my notes, a special town council meeting on the 14th? Is that real?
That's the, uh, that's not real. That's the 14th is the, um,
That was supposed to be.
The Marston's Mills. I'm talking about the massive, that's not the.
Talked about having a special meeting in the town hall hearing room for the general public outside of Marston's Mills.
That's the bar, that is on the 14th.
I don't know. I don't.
I have a question mark behind my mouth.
I think that it, that's it. To me, that was just.
I was confusing it with the strategy, but you're right. That's the Marston's Mills. Also, that is real.
Okay. Although I don't know if I'm either.
Right.
Okay, um, that's.
On November 14th?
Yeah.
It's not on the town calendar. It's not on the town calendar.
Well, because it hasn't been decided yet. I think it's a discussion, right?
Yeah, check with Jim.
She looks away.
Check with Jim. I believe that was a day he saw.
I think it is what he said correctly. I think I remember it correctly, yeah.
So did you want to do?
The 12th to 19th?
I don't like the 19th because we have a real council.
On 12.
12, oh, right, the 12th is the swing.
Unless we just stop doing on Tuesday.
Everybody would run 28.
Does it have to be on a Tuesday night or?
No.
No.
Yeah, I was just thinking, the earlier.
Monday, the 18th.
I mean, how about the 13th? Sorry. No.
12, 2, 3, 6.
Yeah.
We don't have to meet.
Monday, the 18th?
Cindy, Cindy, that has a meeting here at seven, but that's a council meeting, right?
I don't think there's enough people to do it like that, you know, you know, man, but.
I don't think it's going to be a long meeting if we're just going to our meeting. Out of the, this meeting.
If our goal is to finish the rules, are we going to get into the code?
Well, at least finish the rules. I mean, I would think the next meeting would be to finish the rules.
Will we do a meeting remotely to finish the rules?
I don't, I don't know. I prefer a meeting in person. It's so much easier.
I have another question. Once we consider the rules draft done by this group, we present that to the town council, or would they?
I think it goes on an agenda.
Well, it has to, maybe.
No, I meant, but wait till we do the code.
Yeah, do it. That's up to you. Yeah, that's up to you.
Are they going to consider them independent, Craig?
I would, I would think so.
I would love to get these rules done.
Yeah.
Let's get them moving.
Not so that we.
Win the first vote through the game?
Yeah.
Yeah, we win.
Well, half, 50%. You don't think you can squeeze that in on a council week?
I keep it away from Thanksgiving week. I definitely want to keep it like Thanksgiving week. Although.
Yeah, I've already got a housing, or the housing.
The housing is on the 25th.
Monday, which day?
The Monday.
Of this time, Monday.
We could do it Tuesday.
I mean, I could do the 25th.
Yeah, but I.
Go on that day.
Yeah, it could be Tuesday.
It's the 18th, the prior Monday. That's the Monday in front of a town council meeting. It's not too controversial for you. Cause I think it's just mop up and.
I think it is. Is there any ability to do it earlier in the day?
Yeah. Oh, for me.
For me, I'm okay.
Yeah. I guess.
Does it? It doesn't?
My schedule is.
Something everyone knows where he's going to be.
That's true. So if I can make it, I'll be here. If I can't, you just have to.
What do you think?
Are you talking about Monday to 18?
Talking Monday, the 18th?
Yeah.
Is this room open or not available on any time on that day?
There's a Cindy at 14.
About three.
Four, four o'clock, two o'clock.
What time do you want me to say early? You tell us.
When I say early, I mean like during the workday.
Yeah, so what time?
One o'clock.
Or whatever you want to do. Yeah, whatever works.
About one o'clock.
I could do one o'clock.
Can you, you got, you two have, like, you two have a real lot.
Cindy, is your room available?
On the 18th?
Yeah.
At one o'clock?
Yeah.
Yes.
So that's.
There's nothing booked right now. The only stipulation would be that, um, IT doesn't have availability.
We should have checked it on tomorrow.
So the 18th at one o'clock?
Yeah.
Yes. And if we get that all cleaned up, then we can be, um, we can put the, um, proposal.
On the next adjournment.
In December.
Yeah.
Make a motion to adjourn. Oh, wait, we did the minute, yeah.
I did want to make sure.
Monday, the 18th.
One o'clock.
One o'clock.
In this room.
Unless otherwise.
Unless otherwise, Cindy will, that's the one thing. It's a problem we don't have to be.
Yeah, I mean, then staff should be here, but I don't know if Sarah has anybody on vacation and I don't want to speak to them if they're available, if they're not. So I'll, I'll just check with Sarah in the morning.
Okay, Seth.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Seconds.
Any discussions?